Here.
Councilor Hartmeier Prigg, present. I'm sorry, council president. Um, councillor Hassan?
Here.
Councillor Teeter?
Here.
Councillor Tivnan?
Here.
And councillor Kimmy and Mayor Beatty are absent this evening.
Thank you. Um, we will start tonight's agenda with our proclamations, then we'll move on to visitor comments, city managers' report, consent agenda. Uh, we have one presentation tonight and an ordinance first reading before we get to council new business. So I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues. Councillor Hassan, will you take the first proclamation?
Thank you. I'm going to read the proclamation, uh, for Native American Heritage Month. Whereas the city of Beaverton is committed to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging as a fundamental aspect of a healthy, thriving community. And whereas the heritage and contributions of Native Americans help make Oregon economically, culturally, spiritually, and ecologically stronger. And whereas the city recognizes that the area currently known as Beaverton rests on native lands and was originally home to the Atzalati tribe, a band of the Kalapuya who at present are part of the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde since time, memorial, and who are called the area Chikapi or place of the beaver. And whereas the legacy of colonization, genocide, disease, forced relocation, and erasure had lasting impacts on the Native American community. And whereas the current native population of Washington County is composed of people belonging to a multitude of indigenous nations and is estimated to be at least thir- ten thousand four hundred and thirty-seven people, a significant figure, but much lower than what it would be had it not been for the aforementioned offenses. And whereas the city and other institutions have much work to do to repair the history of oppression and disenfranchisement of native peoples and to develop active partnerships with tribal nations, government to government, to strengthen Oregon and build a future of hope and promise for all. And whereas public institutions in Beaverton should work together to increase the visibility of Native Americans and their contributions, offering every opportunity to embrace culturally significant customs and regalia in public spaces, as well as incorporating Native American heritage within public place naming. And whereas the month of November is a time to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures, to raise awareness about our shared history, and to acknowledge the important and continued contributions of the Native American community today. Now therefore, the city of council, the city of Beaverton hereby recognizes November twenty twenty-three as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Beaverton and encourage all to observe this month.
Thank you. And councillor Teeter?
Yes, I'm reading a proclamation for International Paper Day. Whereas on January thirty-first, eighteen ninety-eight, seventeen pulp and paper mills joined to form International Paper Company. And whereas for a hundred and twenty-five years, International Paper has been a catalyst on the global economy as the world's leading producer of renewable packaging, pulp, and other fiber-based products essential to everyday life. And whereas International Paper is one of the world's greatest recyclers of recovered office paper and corrugated boxes. And whereas over the past a hundred and twenty-five years, International Paper's commitment to innovation and customer-focused solutions has caused it to continually evolve to meet new challenges and drive sustainable business outcomes that have shaped, helped shape the industry and revolutionized the way goods are packaged, transported, and protected. And whereas guided by its vision twenty thirty sustainability strategy, International Paper strives to be a force for good and its communities through its commitment to building a better future for people, the planet, and the company. And whereas International Paper opened in Beaverton in nineteen fifty-six, first as Western craft, and became part of International Paper in twenty, in two thousand and two. And whereas International Paper has been a valued partner in our community with more than three hundred employees working at four locations in Beaverton. And whereas throughout its history, International Paper has been actively engaged in the Beaverton community through its participation in food drives, tree plantings, butterfly kits, and environmental education programs for elementary schools and other volunteer activities. And whereas this year, International Paper celebrates its one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of sustainable manufacturing. Now therefore, Lacy Beatty, the mayor of Beaverton, does hereby proclaim November fourteenth, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three as International Paper Day in the city of Beaverton.
Thank you councillor Teeter. We do have a special, um, printed version of this proclamation, so I'd love to invite our guests to come forward to the desk. Bill, if you're joining them, please come up. Uh, if you want to take a few minutes to speak, and then council can come down and present the proclamation and take a photo if you so desire. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you council president and councillors. Um, Bill Berg, Business Development Liaison for Economic Development in the city of Beaverton. And thanks for the opportunity to say a few words this evening. Uh, first, I'd like to welcome, uh, two members of the management team at International Paper here in Beaverton who are attendants tonight to receive the proclamation. We have first Q Hua, Plant General Manager for International Paper Recycling, and Ryan Midaw, who's Operations Manager for Beaverton Plate Division, um, there on Western Avenue. Uh, our economic development team, we just love to celebrate these significant milestones with local companies. And a hundred and twenty-five years in business and sixty-seven years right here in Beaverton are certainly impressive numbers. But even more significant is the positive impact that this company has on our Beaverton community, because every one of us uses their products daily. Filling a paper bag at our grocery stores, receiving one and sometimes more boxes of goods purchased online and delivered right to our doorstep. And then having the opportunity to curbside recycle those bags and boxes and other containers to reduce our environmental impact, a complete sustainable ecosystem. International Paper provides employment and well-paid careers in manufacturing to over three hundred of our community members. They're also very engaged in raising awareness of the career pathways that are available at the company through various events and tours that they host onsite. In fact, I was just there last week for, with about fifty high school students for one of their manufacturing day events. I would encourage you to stop by and, and, uh, look at the showcase that's just outside council chambers to view and display, to view the display that highlights International Paper and to learn more about the company and its many contributions to the Beaverton community. And if either or both of you would like to, to speak, please feel free. Push, turn your mic on.
Sorry. We just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. We're, uh, really excited to be here and to be part of this community. Um, I was telling Bill that Western Avenue looks amazing. So it's, uh, I'm really excited to see all the development around us. So, uh, thank you again for allowing us to be here.
And, um, hi everyone. I'm very happy and proud to be here. As a part of International Paper, um, my recycling plan and also our bag plan, uh, bag plans and box plan, ink plan serve these communities, city of Beaverton. And I hope that we will continue this beautiful relationship and we will try our best to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, council. If we can head on down.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, our next agenda item is visitor comments. Um, visitor comments is the opportunity for the community to speak on any city-related matter, even if it's not on the agenda. Testimony for public hearings, um, will be taken during that portion of the hearing. And visitor comments are limited to three minutes for each person. Visitors may state their comments and should not expect the council to engage in back-and-forth dialogue regarding the comments, as this is a time for the council to hear from the community. So we will do three minutes tonight based on the number of participants we have. We're going to start with the in-room comments, and then we will move to online. So if you are interested in giving testimony online, please do raise your hand, so our city recording staff can help, um, facilitate, including you, in this process. So first up will be Bryce Yonker, I think. And then, um, Mary and Emmett will come up together as our second and third speakers. Um, so Bryce, if you would like to come up and state your name for the record. And then, um, we have asked the city recorder to try to have the little audio clue when the three minutes hits, but it sounds like it might just be a ding. Um, so that will be your cue that the end of your three minutes has arrived. So, thank you.
Council members, thank you for having me this evening, uh, to share some public remarks. My name is Bryce Yonker, and I'm a lifetime resident of Beaverton and the west side of Portland. I'm here tonight mostly wearing the hat as a proud parent of two children, a sixth grader and a second grader, who have had all of their schooling at Saint Cecilia School just down the road. Um, mainly my remarks are around the, the shelter that's nearby to the school and the houseless situation and the increasing crime adjacent to the property. Um, how can anyone in local government, uh, say that anything other than safety of our children is a top priority? So that, that's really the main question that I want to start with tonight as, as I share my remarks. And I really don't see that happening, um, right now. There are multiple and accelerating issues of public safety unfolding right in front of the children at our school, and this does not seem acceptable. There have been numerous instances of open drug use, individuals passed out, drug deals in front of children, children offered drugs, acts of public indecency, acts of violence, and many other concerns that have happened right in front of my children and others, uh, and that are happening in far too close of proximity to the school. All this in just the last couple of weeks. My second grade student has had numerous times of anxiety when he has had to excuse himself from learning while these acts have happened right in front of his classroom. I understand that the drapes have now been pulled, um, and just are permanently closed in the classroom. Pulling the curtain over this issue to block out the, the concerns is not an acceptable solution. Um, I would strongly request the accelerated and permanent placement of the shelter that has long been delayed. This will both help those who need treatment in the facilities in our community get the services that they need and allow for the children to learn and be safe in an environment. Thank you for my, for taking my comments.
Thank you.
Next we'll have Mary. I think it says Binzer, I don't want to mess up. Okay. And Emmett Switzer. And so please just state your name for the record on who will go first, and you'll each have three minutes.
Thank you for, um, having me. Um, hi, my name is Emmett, and I am an eighth grade student at Saint Cecilia School in Beaverton, and I've gone to Saint Cecilia since kindergarten, since I was five. Um, and thank you for letting me share my personal experiences while at school in regards to the people who gather around the shelter. When I was in the seventh grade, there were two men who would come by the playground to talk to the students through the fence. This year, there hasn't been anyone directly interacting with us on the playground, which is an improvement. However, this year my classroom windows face the homeless shelter, and we often see people exchanging items with each other on Tucker Street, and have witnessed people relieving themselves outside. This activity outside our classroom windows have caused our teacher to pause the class for a minute. I was asked if I wanted to speak, speak about this with you, um, tonight, and I'm opening, and I'm open to sharing my experience with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary, I'm Emmett's mom. Thank you for this opportunity. I just want to acknowledge your efforts in working. I just want to acknowledge your efforts in working to get the new shelter, shelter built on timelines provided. The Saint Cecilia Parish and School is committed to partnering with the city to help facilitate and expedite this process. We understand that there are needs of the city along with the needs of the unhoused and our community at Saint Cecilia, and we want to make sure everyone's needs are met. Saint Cecilia continues to donate to the surrounding community via Saint, Saint Vincent de Paul program, the backpack program, and many other programs that go unnoticed. There are, if there are any specific needs that you deem a benefit to the unhoused and for the enrichment of the city of Beaverton. Um, and therefore help keep our, for the enrichment of the city and therefore keep our Saint Cecilia community safe, please let us know. Um, we are open to reviewing such requests with the leadership of the church and school. Basically, we want to work together, have a sense of community, and I ask you, our elected leaders, to continue to provide transparency, honesty, and support for all of us trying to reach our intended goals. It is only with every group here that has a voice that is heard and validated, this is when our entire community thrives. I want you to imagine if you had a child at Saint Cecilia, come home and share what he has experienced during the day. I can't validate his voice because I'm not there to see it, to say, yes, that's what you see, or no, that's not what you see. I just ask you to put yourself in my position, as young adults are growing in this community. And I just appreciate your support.
Thank you for taking the time to come see us tonight. Our next speaker will be Bryce H., and then Megan M., and then Charlie H.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bryce Hanks. Um, I'm also a parent of two young children at Saint Cecilia School. I share in the sentiments of my other, uh, of the other parents there at the school. My children have also had negative experiences. I won't dwell on those tonight, but I have, uh, other items I wanted to touch on. Um, I recognize that with COVID and the Ninth Circuit, Martin B. Boise ruling that cities were put in a bind with the homeless situation recently, and I appreciate that Beaverton acted quickly in providing homeless services and a shelter to, to our homeless population, even if I disagree with the vocation. And I also appreciate the cooperation openness so far in creating a new shelter in an appropriate location that's going to open in twenty twenty-four. That opening date is very important to me and other people in my community, and I ask that we have transparency and knowing that that is coming along to plan. Uh, what I wanted to address is, is something that I think our city code could identify is that currently does not place any restrictions on where a shelter can be, uh, positioned. When change is remained in July twenty twenty-three, it just says that, you know, shelters can be built in various locations, but without any restrictions. Moving forward, our coach has set out that a shelter should not be placed next to a school. I, I think this is consistent with other parts of the code. There's, for example, in the prohibited camping ordinance, the city council and its published findings that precede that, that ordinance says that, uh, this, such a situation can create unsafe and unsanitary living conditions that pose a threat to the peace, health, and safety of themselves, meaning the homeless and the community. And it may result in imminent threats to life. Now, I think, you know, what the council is saying here, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth here, but just from that, that preamble, I think what the council is saying is that some people suffering homelessness, certainly not all, um, some people suffering homelessness may be also suffering a mental health crisis, suffering from drug addictions, and the mix between them and a school next door, young children is not ideal. Um, so like camping, a shelter, uh, doesn't really make sense next to a school. I ask that the code reflect a thousand-foot buffer from the schools there. Uh, this is, uh, in line with what the Oregon State does in its statutes for certain drug treatment clinics, and I think that's reasonable. Uh, close here, and again, thank you for your work on the homeless issue here and providing services to those people in need. The goal is compassion, compassion both for children and for the homeless in our city. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan?
Good evening. My name is Megan Menton. Been a resident of Beaverton for over thirty years, and I've been advocating for our school, Saint Cecilia, for the past three in regards to the warming shelter. Um, since we've been begun coming to the city council meetings, um, we've noticed a change, and I'd like to personally thank you guys for things that have happened around our school that have been an improvement. Um, I want to thank you for the porta potties being moved in the library parking lot to the other side of the parking lot. Um, that has helped with the distractions outside of there and our children feeling safer walking across the street. I also want to thank you for the Good Neighbor Agreement that was drafted with the shelter and the people who have been helping with our crossing guards. Um, that also provides a little sense of security as well for our students, so thank you for doing that for us. Um, I'd also like to discuss things that our parish and school do for the community homeless population. There's been some things that have come to light where unfortunately, um, city members have said things that were, um, saying that we were stigmatizing homelessness, um, to some youth that are in the community, that, um, it's just disheartening to us and it seems a little disingenuine when we've been just pleading to have help in a situation. So I thought tonight I would share some examples of things, not limited to, but things that we do. We have our Saint Vincent de Paul food pantry, where students help weekly packing backpacks with food and supplies for students. We have a Good Samaritan Ministry that was out last week, handing out food coats, shoes, and things like that to homeless people in the community. Our students have toured the shelter next door, and we deliver necessities to them. We do sock drives, coat drives, food drives, toy drives, we adopt families for Christmas. We have been supporting Family Promise for five years monetarily, as well as in other ways that they've been requesting how, help. We have an ongoing outreach of household and hygiene product, hygiene products. We monthly attend the Family Promise meetings. July of twenty twenty-three, we donated four thousand dollars to the homeless, to them. Last week, we had a breakfast donation of winter supplies for the homeless, along with our Knights of Columbus, who gave five hundred dollars towards the homeless. Um, we also support the Good Neighbors Center and the Blanchett House. We also are a big supporter of the Beaverton Restore Center. I just want to thank you again for your partnership and the things that you guys have done to help us thus far, and I would hope that we could be continuing as partners and good name with each other. Um, and I just think that the number one priority is safety for our students and our faculty and our staff, as well as all people who are trying just to use the library as city residents. So thank you for what you've done so far.
Thank you. Next up we have Charlie, and then Teresa, and then we'll move to online.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Charlie Hanson. I'm a Saint Cecilia parent and forty-three-year resident of Beaverton. What I have to say applies to our neighbors, most of whom attend Beaverton schools, have bus stops or walking routes along Fifth Avenue. Our concern for all of our children's safety is immediate and urgent. My first concern is the area directly in front of the library, which is a responsibility of the city of Beaverton. It has become an area rife with homeless people, many with drug and alcohol issues, who have been dismissed from the library. The problem is a serious lack of resources. It is not the responsibility of the library staff because they have not been properly trained to confront these individuals and are understaffed, as is. The city must be held accountable for providing enforcement resources to remove this problem. I don't have site, time-to-site, specific dates and times, but here's a short list that we've seen the last thirty days. Students on their way to the library harassed and offered drugs, two men, one of which was nearly naked, inhaling drugs and acting erratically, several instances of shelter residents shouting obscenities in our parking lots, an elderly man exposing himself to urinate in front of three-year-olds, drugs being smoked and dealt outside school windows, as well as the shelter and library parking lots, a man found sleeping three feet from the preschool door as three and four-year-olds entered the building, a stabbing in front of the library. Our elementary school classrooms currently have their windows and shades drawn all day so they don't see what happened, they don't see what happened, what's going on outside. These are a few instances. From October twenty-first to, uh, excuse me, from October twenty-first to October twelfth, there are an average of eighteen calls per day that required police presence on the scene. Here are actions by the Beaverton Police that we need to keep our children safe. Increase patrols, specifically bike patrol's officers flooding the area between seven and nine AM every day, one-thirty to three PM on Mondays, two-thirty to four PM Tuesday through Friday. Frequent police patrols outside of the above requested hours, sweeps of our buildings, bushes, and surrounding areas every morning at seven AM to address the issues that I have listed above. Library issues. Staff don't want to deal with people inside that library, so they often push them out to the green space in front of the building. They don't have police trespass these individuals. Who is responsible for enforcing these issues at the library and in front of the library? What is risk management doing to train the staff that are public-facing and have to deal with these confrontational individuals on a daily basis? How do we make the library safer with the resources we currently have today? The library is part of the Washington County Library System but ran and owned by the city of Beaverton. Who's responsible for this current chaos? Has there been any thought to putting security at the library, or will it continue to be a place of mayhem? In closing, we need to find a long-term solution to these problems that our children are facing daily. Why are we allowed to have this behavior tolerated in our city? This currently is not working. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Teresa?
Thank you guys for having me. Hello, my name is Teresa Nadarostic, and I have been a resident at Beaverton for fifteen years, and I'm a parent of two children at Saint Cecilia School. I, like many other parents at our school, have been concerned about instances surrounding the shelter, and I have appreciated how many members in our community have been advocating for the safety of not only the students at our school, but also the safety of Beaverton residents, as well as the residents and employees of the shelter. It has come to my attention that in advocating for our students' safety, our parish and school community is appearing to some, to not be compassionate or supportive of our unhoused population. As a parent of an eighth grader and someone who has been a part of Saint Cecilia School for eleven years, I can tell you from my own experience that this current stigma being portrayed could not be further from the truth. In fact, when I heard this feedback, I was incredibly disheartened because I personally know a few of you, and I have been incredibly vocal in my support of the council as a whole in the past. One of the main reasons I chose to enroll my children at Saint Cecilia is the parish and school's commitment to service. Service is one of the main tenants at our school, right up there with learning and faith. It is something our parents and students pride themselves on, the importance of being good stewards in our community. Over my years as a parent there, I have seen that it is not just lip service, we regularly support many programs throughout our community, which other parents have touched on tonight. I came here tonight because I felt it was important to express to the council how much our school community values and wants to assist our unhoused population. I know that our community just wants to work with the mayor and the council for the safety of every single person in the surrounding vicinity of the shelter. Even as our school community has seen many unsafe situations arrive recently, we have simultaneously seen an increase in parents going to the shelter to see how they can help the population and staff there, which is another example of how we will always continue to look for and find a way to serve. As an aside, I would like to acknowledge the shelter staff for their changes and help to ensure our community's safety. And I would like to ask the council to consider what we can do about the increasing number of individuals that are being trespassed from the shelter, since these are where we are encountering the majority of disturbances and unsafe situations recently. I will leave you with a reading of our school's mission statement. Every morning before school, our students and teachers meet and recite the mission statement as a reminder of who we are, who we want to be, and how we want to conduct ourselves each and every day. The statement is as follows. The mission of Saint Cecilia School is to partner with parents, to prepare students to be the responsible citizens and lifelong learners with strong Catholic values. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now move to our online. We have Sabdi up first, and then David.
Thank you.
Okay, Sabdi, it looks like you have speaking rights.
Excuse me?
You're good, you've got the mic.
Okay, thanks so much. Uh, good evening, my name is Sabdi Pacheco Williams, Chair of the City of Beaverton Human Rights Advisory Commission. I'm here today on behalf of ATRAC regarding the ongoing war in the Middle East, the attack on human rights, and the impact on the BIPOC community here in Beaverton. We have witnessed a horrific attack on human rights, as thousands of men, women, and children have been taken hostage, denied basic needs, and brutally murdered in the Hamas attack on Israel and the ongoing IDF genocide in Gaza. The images are inescapable, as is the pain and suffering, and as a result, hundreds of thousands across the country have taken to the streets to protest and call for a ceasefire, a safe return of Israeli hostages, and for the United States to stop funding this genocide on Palestinians. This has a direct impact on the residents of Beaverton, many of whom identify with or have close connections to both communities. ATRAC was founded because of a hate crime in our own city. An increase in hate speech, including but not limited to Islamophobia and anti-Semitism, creates unsafe, divided, and traumatized communities. Our community is hurting now, and our local elected leaders must show up and lead on behalf of our city. ATRAC unanimously passed a motion in our November session requesting the city take the following actions. One, release a statement to the city of Beaverton residents reaffirming our intention to be a welcoming city and that hate crimes, anti-Semitism, and Islamophobia have no place in our city. Two, release a statement to the city of Beaverton residents affirming the city council's commitment to anti-racism as a top council priority. Three, work together with ATRAC, the Beaverton Police Department, and key leaders to host a public forum for this Beaverton discussing the impact of hate crimes and how they are reported and handled in the city. Four, request that Beaverton Police Department include hate crimes as a category in their monthly data reporting for both the city and schools. Five, openly acknowledge the trauma, fear, and loss our community members are experiencing, and hold a moment of silence for our Jewish and Palestinian communities at the council meeting this evening. Six, publicly call for a ceasefire. No rules prevent the council from doing this, and we would not be the only city council across America to do so. Global moments have a local impact. We cannot look the other way. We strongly advise the city to prioritize trust building with community members through proactive leadership and take this opportunity to lead our community as we navigate these tragedies. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Anderson. Our next speaker is David Anderson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you very much. Members of the council, my name is David Anderson. I'm a resident of Beaverton for twenty-five years and co-owner of Syndicate Wine Bar located in Old Town Beaverton. First, I wish to offer some comments about that AI bot attack that happened a few weeks back during the city council meeting. I was appalled to hear the comments leveled against the city council members and the mayor. I wish to show support for all city council members and that we stand in full support against such abhorrent behavior. It is not part of the democratic process, and I applaud you all for standing strong. Secondly, I wish to just thank Councilor Kevin Teeter for information that I had requested from him on how to find bicycle lockers to place on our property. We're still awaiting some feedback from city staff, but the fact is that Kevin was very helpful, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much, Kevin. I wish also to thank Councilor John Duggar for offering some views of the United Downtown District and what that might look like. It is forward thought like this that helps us all see a more positive and frankly exciting future for our community. Thank you, Councilor Duggar. That said, I do wish to turn our attention to concerns that we have about the First Street Dining Commons. My spouse and Syndicate's majority business owner, Angela Anderson, has already submitted written comments, and I understand you have all received that documentation. First of middle is the first of several written comments we as concerned business owners will be submitting in coming weeks regarding ongoing concerns of the commons, as well as thoughtful and objective comments countering arguments the city has thus far presented regarding the purported importance of the commons to our district. On Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, a slideshow presentation was made by a City of Beaverton employee to Bureau about the First Street Commons future. The opening screen of that presentation featured a photograph of Syndicate Wine Bar's former outdoor dining space, known as the Barrel Room, including works of art I had personally produced for that space, including a dedication table I made as a memorial to the memory of my late father. Using any imagery of our private property, and specifically my works of art, as part of a presentation to muster your support for the First Street Dining Commons without my permission, is a blatant copyright violation. In a bigger picture, it's just bad business to appropriate something that doesn't belong to you but that you think you could use to build a case for what you want. I formally request the city immediately cease using any imagery of Syndicate Wine Bar's property or those works of my art. In the bigger picture also, it calls into question some of the data presented to Bureau in the surveys about the commons and specifically the community members and businesses in the vicinity. I would like to ask a formal process to see that data results of those surveys because too many points are just not adding up. And I am formally calling into question the accuracy of the data sets. So, I know you probably can't get back to me now, but could someone at the city please let me know what is the process to request public records information on those data sets? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is the city manager's report.
Council President. Oh, just wanted to point out there was one written public comment in the packet as well.
Okay. Do I need to read it into the record? Is it just it's?
No, just acknowledging it was from Dave Burke and also on the First Street Dining Commons.
Thank you.
No report, Council President, but for next December fifth meeting, there will be a city manager report and one monthly going forward, just to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Council President, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's a move by Councilor Hassan and seconded by Councilor Duggar. Are there any comments on the motion? Seeing none. City Recorder, will you please take the vote by roll call?
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivna?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Council President Hartmeier Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Five zero two.
Okay, and next up is the presentation this evening. I'm going to remind my fellow counselors that presentations are for the benefit of us obtaining information and knowledge. It's not a work session, so just keep that in mind as we have a limited amount of time for these. I'd like to welcome our guests up. Christina Klein, and if there's anyone else with you, please feel free to join us at the table. Let's make sure your microphone is on. You can tell with the red light if that comes on. And then for anyone that will, Christina, please introduce yourself, and the others with you, please introduce yourselves as well.
Good evening, members of the city council. Thank you for making time for us to share how your support of Portland Community College's Future Connect program is transforming lives in Beaverton. I'm Jennifer Monik. I am the past president of the Portland Community College Foundation Board of Trustees and a twenty-three-year resident of the City of Beaverton.
As you may know, PCC is the largest institution of higher education in the state of Oregon, serving more than fifty thousand learners annually. With four campuses and ten centers, including our Opportunity Center at Willow Creek, our Rock Creek Campus, and our Sylvania Campus, PCC's reach extends throughout our region. PCC is committed to creating opportunity and economic mobility for our students. Over a working lifetime, the benefits of an associate's degree over a high school diploma will amount to more than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in higher earnings. Through your support, we are able to change the trajectory of students' lives. When you invest in programs like Future Connect, you're helping students achieve upward mobility, and that benefit extends beyond their personal future. There is a ripple effect when a student attends college through their family, through their community, and throughout our entire region. I have been fortunate to spend time as a volunteer with the Future Connect program, and the students I interacted with are incredible. These are the students who will ultimately make our communities a better place. They are inspired by their experiences, their families. They want to learn, and they want to use their knowledge to grow the opportunities around them, to give back to their communities, to create pathways for those who come after them. They have big dreams rooted in their own realities. I'd like to turn it over to Josh Laurie to share more about how your investment is supporting Beaverton residents.
Good evening, Council President and City Council members. I'm Josh Laurie, I'm the Student Success, I'm the Director of Student Success Programs at Portland Community College. Suzanne Hesse, who is the Future Connect Manager, was to be here tonight, but she's sick, so you're stuck with me. I apologize. I did, though, before I had this job, I was the Future Connect Manager for ten years and helped start the program in two thousand and eleven. I've been lucky to work alongside the City of Beaverton for the last ten years. We have had a partnership, so it's our ten-year anniversary this year. For background and context, I'd like to share just a breadth of what Future Connect does. First and foremost, Future Connect is a scholarship and support program that primarily serves first-generation and/or low-income students to access affordable college resources, all in line with increasing livable wages for citizens in Beaverton. We are working closely with your local high schools to identify students who are not often thinking about college or school after high school. This is not a merit-based scholarship, but rather a need-based scholarship. And when we meet with students before they graduate, they do get a scholarship, holistic support from a coach, and then workforce information about a pathway to their career. We have partnered with the city, as I said, since two thousand and thirteen, and in that time, we've served six hundred and two students in our program. Eighty percent of those students identify as students of color. On average, seventy-six percent of those students in our first cohort earn twenty-five-plus credits in their first year. This is a key momentum point in college, earning over twenty-five credits in your first year. And over the last four years, we have helped an average of a hundred and forty-three students register each term, each fall term in college. Our program serves students who face incredible barriers to college success. And while we provide them financial support in terms of scholarship, the personal support carries more weight and ultimately is the key factor in our students' persistence and success. Our coaches begin working with students before they complete high school or their GED and continue to work with them all the way until they complete at PCC. Excuse me. From the moment coaches meet students, they begin forming relationships and bonds so students know they can rely and trust in them, not only to support them with their academic goals, but with other factors that could impact their goals, positive or negative. Students come to coaches for financial aid support, advice on courses, strategies, and connections to find work, including resume building, and also for other things like housing, food insecurity, relationship support, confidence building, and cheerleading, and even sometimes candy in our offices. Our hope is that our students will feel comfortable coming to coaches for anything, whether it's something small like needing a bus ticket, to something huge like life-changing, like even maybe facing an eviction. Over my time at PCC, it has become clear to me how important the coach and student relationship is to our students' success and ultimately our program goals. Because students feel safe, heard, and connected to a community within Future Connect, they know there is always someone to go to who knows who they are, what their goals are, and what is happening in their life. The impact of these relationships is often deepened in our college success courses that students take, where they explore career options they might not have known about. With that knowledge and the support of their coaches to work through plans, our students often dream bigger and go on to futures that they might not have believed open to them. To share more about that, I'd like to introduce Esme Villanueva Santana to share some of her story with you.
Good evening, my name is Esmeralda Villanueva Santana. I go by Esme, I use she and her pronouns. My high school career was very complicated as I attended three different high schools, but ultimately graduated from Southridge High School. Out of the three schools, I enjoyed Southridge the most. I developed most of my work ethnic and interpersonal skills there. During my senior year, I often volunteered for the Academic Learning Center and the Class for Students with Disabilities. I was awarded the Seal of Biliteracy, the Future Connect Award, Kaiser Permanente Health Equity Scholarship, and the Southridge Parent Teacher Organization First Generation Scholarship. My experience here is exactly why I want to give back to my community. My transition from high school to Portland Community College was easier because of the Future Connect program. They were aware of my situations and circumstances that I was coming from. My first year was a struggle as I had to withdraw from two terms because I was pushed to step in as a parental figure for my younger sibling. Annette, my coach, helped me fill out the Oregon Promise Appeal to receive funding to continue my education. Without her and the Future Connect family, I would not be here in front of the city council. They showed me several resources that PCC provides, like the Panther Food Pantry and the Women's Resource Center. My favorite part about the program are the coaches and how much they care for each student. They've, they help me remain motivated and help me push through obstacles. Their office space is also very helpful, is a very helpful place to do work and find other peers who I can connect with. I also love how I can, I can, I get to connect with other students in or outside of the Future Connect program by volunteering for events such as a preview day for high schoolers interested in PCC and/or by participating in school field trips and tours provided by this program. Future Connect is a second family, a diverse and non-discriminatory family who I feel safe with. I also appreciate all the different CG classes and workshops that are offered. For example, I'm currently taking CG one thirty, a class that focuses on today's careers. I learned to use various websites to research the career I'm interested in. Through this class, I also learned how to conduct an informational interview, build relationships, write a resume, network, and connect with my community. Because of these lessons, I was able to advocate for myself and receive a job shadow as a medical, sorry, as a medical stenographer at the end of this month. In the near future, I see myself becoming a diagnostic medical stenographer, which is an ultrasound, just a fancier way of saying it. I'm excited to have a positive impact on my community as well as in the medical field. I'm looking into the Medical Imaging Technology Program at the Oregon Institute of Technology. I am currently taking all my prerequisites at the Sylvania Campus to enter this program. As a final note, I just want to thank the people that made it possible for me and other students, and other students' dreams and education to continue. Your contributions and continued support is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Esme. Thank you so much for sharing your story and for your time with us, Esme. Before we move to questions, I just want to briefly share a little bit about where Future Connect's headed. We greatly appreciate the support and commitment Beaverton has provided Future Connect in the past ten years. We also acknowledge the difficult budgetary choices the city has had to make. The Beaverton School District and PCC partnership is strong. The Beaverton School District is the third-largest district in Oregon. It's also majority students of color, with almost forty percent of students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. And close to nineteen percent of the graduating seniors from BSD go to PCC, by far serving many more BSD grads than any other college. We want those students in our program, and they also want to be a part of Future Connect. Beaverton students who are part of Future Connect family love their experience and share their stories with their peers, friends, and family members who are still in high school, encouraging them also to apply. Unfortunately, any given year, we are only able to award about twenty-five to forty percent of the Beaverton students who apply to our program. Beaverton by far has the highest ratio of students who apply for our program, but are unfortunately not to be able to be awarded. We are hopeful for continued support of the City of Beaverton to continue to serve as many students as possible so they are able to succeed and persist, and then take those experiences and knowledge back to their communities in the forms of jobs and livable wages. Finally, I just want to invite you all to any of our classes this term and next. We have all these Today's Careers classes happening on our campus for all our Future Connect students, and we love to have leaders in leadership come into those classes to meet some of our students who you yourself are sponsoring. Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much for coming to spend time with us tonight. Esme, your story gave me goosebumps. So, if anyone else on council has anything you want to share or any questions, name in the chat. Okay, yep, go ahead, counselor.
I think we're just silent. It was a beautiful presentation, and one of the things I know Council President was trying to say is usually when with presentations, we try to receive the information rather than ask the questions. I'd love if you could maybe just high-level, like number of students we've served in the last year or two, if you have that information and that.
Yeah, we did send an executive summary ahead of time.
Yeah, I see it, sorry.
Okay, and this year, we had, we served all fifty-five of the students that we agreed to serve, and we are currently serving them. We haven't lost one single student from the City of Beaverton this fall. And as I said, we had a hundred and forty-three students that we helped register. On average, I think it's about one forty-eight this term, but it's about a one forty-three over the last four-year average for a fall term. So, we have second-year students and some third-year students, and we track them for the last ten years.
We love this program. Thank you for sharing your story and thank you for presenting.
Okay, thank you so much for joining us this evening. We are going to take a quick break before we move to our first reading. That's not what it says. On December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan land use map and zoning map for one parcel at one-six-two-nine-zero Northwest Bronson Road and adjacent portions of Northwest Bronson Road, LU three-two-zero-two-three dash zero-zero-five-three-seven Bronson Road, CPMA three-two-zero-two-three slash ZMA three-two-zero-two-three dash zero-zero-five-three-six. Our next agenda item is council new business. So, if you have anything you want to share this evening, go ahead and put your name in the chat. Counselor Hassan?
Okay. I guess if it's okay, I wanted to just ask a few questions as a city manager regarding some of the testimony we got, just to get clarity, if that's okay. I noticed that some of the testimony was around increasing patrol. Can you just explain like how that works? Because I think I have an understanding, but I'd love for the council to hear, like, if a school wants increased patrol, how does that work?
So, AJ should be here, and he could speak to that. We don't typically take requests for additional patrol. We will look at whatever the issue is, stats, data, metrics, to determine what's warranted, and then the PD will make that determination. There's also other factors, I'm sure, at play, but it, it all depends on the context. With respect to the issue around Saint Cecilia's, we are taking all of that information in, under kind of consideration, and we have been making adjustments. So, the PD is doing that based within their own operational capacity and abilities. So, that work is actually actively underway. So, if that's the context that you're talking about, this respects to the school, I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. I, it's okay. I, well, I only ask unless AJ would like to speak. I can't. We have a mic for you if you'd like to come up. I don't think you can see him. Oh, I didn't see him. It was like I thought they were on Zoom.
You're welcome, AJ.
Thanks, AJ. Or officer.
Good evening, councilors. To address the question, I think that Counselor Hassan is, is.
To address the question I think that Counselor Hassan is bringing up is we patrol based on need, not specific school, location, groups of people such as that. Obviously, our bike team is our primary response to the houseless community. And they spend a lot of time in the core library, St. Cecilia, Fifth and Hall area, just because that is a hub for services provided to the houseless community. But the bike team also responds to other areas of the city to deal with camping ordinance issues. So it's not, it's, we're not responding specifically to St. Cecilia's. It just happens that we do spend a lot of time there.
Okay, and this is maybe for the council, but also for you. Like one of my daughter's school received, the community center down the street received threats, and the sheriff's office shared that you can pay for additional patrolling via the sheriff's office? Is that something that PD does, or am I just?
That, that may be in relationship to a special patrol district that are levy-based for the sheriff's office. They do have what they call enhanced patrol districts. They're all funded for and sponsored by levies. So that is not something that we would participate in at the city of Beaverton. So that, that may be what they're referring to.
Yeah, and that's why I asked, because that's, we're just, I'm dealing with that, like with my daughter's school, and I was just curious how that worked. Since you're here, I did have a note about the hate crime comment that was made. Do we not track hate crimes as a city?
Hate crimes typically are tracked at the state level, and, and we report into the state database. I don't think we keep our own specific stat on that.
Okay, so because like, for example, there's the bias hotline, and I know I send people there all the time. Do we circle back as a city, or that just lives with the state?
Because it lives at the state level, I don't think we specifically do anything individually. Obviously, if it meets the criteria for a bias crime, then we report it directly to the state. They compile the data.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You bet.
I would just add, I want to take a moment and just honor what the ATRAC folks might be requesting and see how you all feel about whether it's as simple as a statement condemning antisemitism and Islamophobia in our community or more. I've shared this with a couple folks, but I do think y'all should know one of the diversity, former Diversity Advisory Board members, who I've seen publicly lost thirty-nine family members in one of the airstrikes. And they do live here in the city, and they were, they're no longer on the Diversity Advisory Board. They're a former member, but I didn't realize how close to home what's happening there was. So would love to hear what y'all feel, who would like to do. Thank you, AJ.
And yeah, do you say do lifts? You don't have to stay at the table for this. I, yeah, I was like, hot seat, Counselor Hassan. Okay, does anyone else want to comment or respond to Counselor Hassan? Okay, I'll try. I think, you know, I've had some conversations with colleagues and with members of our community, and I do really want to acknowledge that there's just a lot of hurt happening in our community right now. I do think as a board, we've made our stance clear that hate has no place in Beaverton, that our commitment to being a welcoming city is something that we try to live by every day and something that I think we all also acknowledge we want to continue to work on so that we live it and not just say it. I think that, I think about what is my role as a, as a city counselor? And I think that that role is to really focus on my community in Beaverton, to continue to do our best to make the most informed decisions on behalf of our community, and also acknowledge that members of our community are hurting, whether personally or just because we're human. And so for me right now, what I feel comfortable saying is I am completely anti-hate in all forms, especially Islamophobia and antisemitism. Those communities are hurting right now and need extra care and love as this international war and conflict continues.
I will say I, I was at DAB on Monday. I'm the council liaison for the Diversity Advisory Board, and there was some conversation around there. I will say this, I did check in with chief today just to see if there are any known threats, right? Like, we have a really good police department that looks into these things, and I feel like that's, that's kind of my lane as a, as a local leader. Is, is my responsibility is to really focus on the things that we can control, the things that we can have impact on. And so I checked in with the chief and I was like, are there any known threats? And there are not. They're not any threats against our Muslim community, known threats, I should say, against our Jewish community, Palestinians, or any adjacent, adjacent communities. So, you know, I think that's, that's part of our role, is to make sure that, that we are resourcing those, those needs correctly, making sure that there's no sort of problems in the makeup of the organization and the resourcing, the funding to keep people safe. That's what I heard loud and clear at DAB the other night was, was there were some incidents that had happened in Portland, and police were called, and an hour and a half later, they still hadn't had a response. And there was, there was fear, genuine fear from people. And then folks looked at Lieutenant Kingsbury and was like, that has not been my experience here in Beaverton. When you call, you get help. And that flagged in my mind that, that's one of our primary roles, is to keep, keep checking in on our communities. And it kind of bounces around who's targeted and whose need is most immediate. But checking in on them, make sure they're okay, and then change the systems that make, that support the communities and make, keep folks safe. And I think that's what I, I think about a lot, and that's kind of my lane, is, is just making sure that, that, you know, if, if, if you're a Muslim person in this community and you feel unsafe, you know, if you call and your threats, the threats against you will be taken seriously, and they will be responded to and with compassion, and they will be responded to immediately. And I think that's, that's something that's really important. Same with our Jewish community, our Palestinian community, our, our kind of adjacent communities. So just something that's been on my mind lately.
Thank you. Counselor Tivnan?
Yeah, some initial thoughts on this. I think, I would hope that it goes without saying, but it, it should always be reiterated that Islamophobia and antisemitism should have zero place or room in this community and making sure that our residents know that that's where their city leaders and city staff and people to protect them and take care of their streets and are here looking out for everyone as a whole feel that way as well. As for the recommendations from the ATRAC letter, just a couple of weeks ago at our retreat, we talked about if we're going to be making any sort of council proclamations that they would be rare, but they would be centered on Beaverton, and they would be conversations that would be had together. And so the fact that we have two of our folks missing tonight seems like it's in complete conversation without them here to lend their voices and perspectives on it. But I, we had hundreds of thousands of people marching in the streets today and yesterday, and so it's, it's a conversation that's landing on, I think, a lot of municipalities' doorsteps and other forms of government. So having it here in Beaverton, it's a conversation that, that I think we should have. When that happens, I don't know about tonight, just because the mayor and Counselor Kimi are not here for it.
I've had countless conversations with some of our colleagues, leaders across the region and community members from these communities, and just so many conversations with people who are feeling so much pain. And I think one of the biggest and most valuable things that I can do here as a local leader is recognize that pain and hold space for it. I would, I would support us having a moment of silence or holding that space just to recognize that so many people here are hurting, even people like me who have no direct personal connection to any of that conflict. But I carry, I carry that pain with me too, and I carry it in here. And I feel it when we talk about International Paper Day or any of our topics of conversation. I'm still thinking about it, and I know our communities are too. And I, I think there could be value in just holding space for some silence and recognizing that pain and, and having that empathy at the start or end of our meeting. I'd be open to something like that.
I wonder if we could just suggest like a small resolution at the next meeting and let the other folks maybe weigh in via Jenny or Bill, just saying we condemn. I hear you, but our, I don't know that our community has heard us say that in the last year, right? That we condemn Islamophobia and we condemn antisemitism. I do think it's a good first step to just say it. I know when I first started, we did a resolution around human rights. I don't remember the specifics. It was a couple of years ago. But if, if it's worth entertaining something like that, but I also want to hold space for the fact that not everyone is present, and so make sure that maybe we were able to get that alignment.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for, you know, sharing. It's, it's heavy and it's hard. And I think we all acknowledge it's affecting our community. I don't know, I don't, I guess I'm not sure. I mean, there are five of us. We have quorum, so if we as a quorum want to take that direction now, so I'm curious from city attorney or city manager, if you have any guidance for us on if, you know, we've talked, we did talk a little bit about like the legality at, I think, our retreat, about like what legally should we get involved in or not? And, and I, I guess that would just be something, I don't know. And if you don't want to weigh in, that's okay.
Well, I do agree that there's a quorum here, and our normal way of dealing with when some people are missing is it's a majority of those present and voting. So in this situation, if three of you decided you wanted to go in a direction, that would be a majority of those present and voting. Okay. In terms of whether to do a resolution or not, there's some practical issues. I heard a lot of suggestions being made. I think there were maybe five resolutions. That's not a small resolution. That would be a lot. So I think I would need some guidance in terms of what it is that you would want to say in that resolution. I also just want to speak to Counselor Teeter's idea of a moment of silence or holding space for those. That is perfectly acceptable. That's a, that would be the least amount of work, but I realize it's not an expression of maybe sentiments. But it is something that could be done without question in terms of just personal reflection on the situation and, and working through those issues in a moment or of silence, whatever amount of time feels appropriate.
Okay, thank you. And Jenny, I guess my question would be, would we need to take like a formal motion and vote? In order, like if, if we wanted to pursue that now, like pursue versus adopt, right? There'd have to be a formal action of what we would even adopt in a resolution?
So if there is a consensus or a majority of you that want to talk about it at a next meeting, you could ask to have it a work session or something agendized. You could wait until you have the full council available, since this is a significant discussion and policy decision, which would be my recommendation, that you don't take any action. Have a full council, and then you could bring it up under council matters and get more clarity about what that, what it is that you would like to do.
Thank you. Counselor Hassan, are you comfortable if we wait for the full seven?
Yeah, I want to be clear. I know there's what ATRAC is asking. I think I'm saying, could we do this moment of silence with a small statement and/or resolution not specific to getting involved in policy matters, simply saying that we as a council condemn any mistreatment of people? And so if it's a three-to-four sentence statement, I'm not looking for anything fancy. Like I do think that our community wants to hear that we're saying that, whether it's in that moment of silence or coupled with a statement, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for kind of clarifying the ask. I think that was, like, I understood that's what you're asking for. Excuse me, sorry, that was gross. Okay, thank you, Counselor Hassan. Are there any other council new business items or topics anyone wants to share? Okay, I have one. A group of us got to go to our sister city Gotemba and our friendly city Ogaki. And I will say that in the midst of some really hurtful things happening in international scenarios, it was something really special to spend time in community with people from around the world and who were also focused on taking care of their city. I'd love to get to share more, maybe in like an informal or non-rule-breaking way, of course. But if anyone wants to hear, like, for me, it was kind of life-changing to go experience a city that way. And it was really exciting hearing about international paper. I didn't really, like, even through the resolution, I learned so much about them. One of my favorite parts, and it's why at retreat I said we can do waste management like sustainably, was because we got to go to a waste management plant there. They called it an eco park, and it was for Gotemba and a nearby city. And they had this completely sustainable way of waste reduction, and it was burning trash. And your first question was like, and what about all the pollution? And they had this like amazing system where it takes the toxins out of the air, where they like have these sustainable practices. The whole community like learns how to separate their trash into what's burnable and what's not, and they take recycling very seriously. And they actually built community space at the eco park. So there was like these multipurpose fields and things like that. And I thought it was just a really interesting way to bring like the community in to like this very like city service-oriented thing. So anyways, I just wanted to share that it was really a special thing, and I hope that as future sister cities' trips happen with other sister cities that you will each have a chance to go, because it was just, it was really special and kind of healing in a time when there is so much hurt going on. So I just wanted to share a moment of something that was special to me about that trip. Yeah.
Since we're sharing, I do sit, I'm the liaison for the Metro Policy Advisory Commission, which is MPAC. I will mess it up, so I'm not going to say it, but we passed a ton of really good stuff two meetings ago. It was an in-person meeting. It was like updates to like the transportation system plan. There were just quite a few like very complex topics that were going to get pretty apparently intense. And so I think the Washington County group was like, we're going to get this passed. And so we were making a lot of motions and a lot of seconds, and so it was really exciting. And in the last meeting, we talked about urban redevelopment. And so I don't know if I'll be doing it next year. We'll see. But it's been a really interesting experience, just so you all know a little bit of what goes on on that commission, because it's very different than what we do here.
Thank you for sharing. Okay, any final comments? Okay, well, maybe not quite record-breaking, but pretty close. Our meeting is adjourned.